John, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. We're waiting on the clerk's office to to mow it in, to record.
Okay, I have started the recorder.
Okay. Well, it's three o'clock and they know we're gonna get started at three, so as long as you got it recorded, we are. So, uh, it's gonna be Thursday, October twenty-second, twenty-twenty, that's three oh five. And, uh, we have a call here, we'll call a meeting to order, and we acknowledge any guests that's here today. And, uh, I'm getting my glasses on, so I can see what I'm reading here. And we're going, we're here to deliberate and consider action on the following items. Number one, to discuss an appropriate select and approved bid, winning bid for precinct three road, uh, county road repair. Uh, this is.
John, did you look at those bids, too?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this is a FEMA project, I believe. And I'm gonna see how much we allotted for about it. Remember, we got two bids, it's for, uh, county road repairs. He got one from a lead out of Kirbyville, a hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars, and the other one's Williams Equipment and Construction, one hundred seventeen thousand, forty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Did you look at their supplemental? Everything looked good to me that we had asked for.
Mm-hmm.
Did you specify in there, but I'm assuming it's some oil sand you're putting down?
No.
Or sand?
Oh, no, it's just, uh, uh, red dirt, uh, red dirt and, uh,
Yeah.
uh, gray rock.
Okay.
And lower some, uh, reset some coves.
Yes, it could be a little things like that.
Yeah.
How much was the lead?
Uh, one hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-one, Stephen.
Okay.
And what was, uh, Williams?
Uh, one hundred seventeen thousand, forty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents.
How much difference?
How much difference?
Pretty close.
Now, Pete? Is it, is it mandatory that we take the lowest bid, or can we justify that?
Uh, with FEMA, if you don't, you have to explain why. Uh, a real detailed explanation as to why.
And, uh, what reason would that be?
Well, he's supposed to be doing two jobs for the county, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, no, Elite.
Elite has not completed Shepherd Road right, right?
They've.
And, and at the same time, will they be doing the Sandpit Road at the same time?
They're gonna be doing that.
And?
You could make the motion to them with, if you're loaded it out, you can table it. But you may wanna talk to them and ask them if they have the crew to get yours done timely also, if you got a project. I don't know how big your.
Oh, you know what he gonna say? He gonna say, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, he's gonna say, yeah, it's him.
And I didn't, I don't remember what he said about his time. How big of a company were they anyway? I don't really know. A pretty good sized company?
I don't think they're like, uh, Williamson.
No, Williams is pretty big. I was looking to see if he said anything about when they could start. And I don't remember the span. I mean, they've done some pretty good sized projects, uh, but I mean, it's up to y'all if you wanna, I mean, it, with the procurement, even if they have a procurement, it's the best, you know, the best quality that you're gonna expect with the best part. I mean, they're pretty placed. I mean, less than, what, four thousand? Probably three thousand.
Yeah.
Three thousand dollars.
Well, in your opinion, oh, it'd be your roads.
Correct.
So, uh, do you think we can justify going to the Second Better Festival when you, I'm not saying, you know?
I would think with the, with the amount of construction that he's probably got going on right now, uh, and not to say anything bad about it, but they've been dragging out Shepherd Road for quite some time now. And, uh, I would, I would like, if it, if it were permitted, I would like for Williams to try.
And we can put that reasoning down that they were, you know, that we've had experience with them.
Yeah.
Not really.
Not bad.
They're not bad, but it's just, it's just, and there's thin issues, and it's like, once they get off to fix an issue, and they come around to get started again, even though they're, you know. So we can just make sure that that's noted in the minutes, so that when I have to put a copy with it, we don't know why I put it. Are you other?
Well, I do know their main man has been working on Shepherd Road, uh, got killed over on Ninety-two, just walked a week and a half ago. And he was their main man down there, uh, and the grave man and all that stuff. I have no bearings on this, but I'll just tell you. Uh,
I, I would like, if, if we could justify it, I would like.
And I think we can.
I would like to try Williams.
I think we can. As close as they are, now, if they were allotted for their part, they'd be a whole different story, but as close as they are, I think we, we could be able to justify.
As long as the money, is, is it enough money in that allotted to it?
I don't really mean the.
I think it was around a hundred and thirty thousand.
I think it was, uh, wasn't it about a hundred and thirty?
I think it was around a hundred and thirty.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah. So that way, we can.
And every dime got paid by, right?
Yeah. Well, they haven't given it to us yet.
Well, I'm not.
Okay.
That's my vote.
Do you want my motion?
Uh, I make a motion that we accept Williamson for County Road twenty-eleven.
Your second? Motion made by Mr. Pombey, second by Mr. White, that we accept, uh, Williamson, uh, for the bid winner on the Precinct Three County Road Repair. Any discussion? Not all in favor? You announce before. Uh, number two, to discuss or appropriate approve, uh, revised resolution for construction on Bridge, uh, CR twenty-eighteen at Hackberry Branch in partnership with Texas Department of Transportation. Liz?
And yes, we have visited this already twice. The lady at Techstock has finally got exactly what we needed in this, 'cause we have sent, um, sent it in, and she said, I think you're gonna want more detail in Austin, that's why we had to give this. The second time, she said, no, we're not gonna need that. Well, this is the third time, yes. We had to have flat and log and maps and all this bunch of stuff. So she has reviewed it, she said it was good, and it should be, yeah. Hopefully. We're gonna send it up one more time.
Okay. Good motion.
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Pombey, second by Mr. Fuller, that we approve the revised resolution for the construction of Bridge, CR eighteen, uh, twenty-eighteen Hackberry Branch in partnership with Texas Department of Transportation. Any discussion? All in favor? Four. Number three, and it's discussing appropriate approve, revise, advance funding agreement for the bridge replacement with the construction of the bridge on CR twenty-eighteen Hackberry Branch in partnership with, with, with Texas Department of Transportation.
And that's the same thing, it goes in conjunction with the resolution. There were some, some verbiage in there that we had to change.
Okay.
The advanced funding, I'm not sure I understand what that is.
That's just what they call that, if they call that, uh.
Tech, Techstock funded it, Bill? I had, I had to, uh,
It's for that.
I had to come up with twelve thousand dollars.
You gotta have your match, Tim.
My twelve thousand dollars, and they allowed me to, uh, uh, buy some new coves and lower some new coves and put in some rock for the twelve thousand. And I'm taking care of that right now.
Next motion we approve it, revising the funding for the bridge replacement of the bridge on County Road, uh, twenty-eighteen at Hackberry Branch in partnership with the Department of Transportation. Your second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Fuller on item number three, any discussion? All in favor? Four. Number four is to accept monetary donation from the Sabine River Authority. And, uh, to tell you a little bit about that, uh, right after Hurricane Laura, uh, SRA called me and asked me what they could do. And, uh, I told them it would be greatly appreciated if they just donated me some monetary value. Uh, didn't discuss no amount whatsoever, uh, so they called me this week. And, uh, I told them the reason I wanted monetary value is to help, uh, with my payroll because of the payroll overtime and double time, whatever that was, in, uh, Hurricane Laura. So they called me and said they were gonna donate us a hundred thousand dollars before that go. So, uh, I'd like for y'all to accept the, uh, donation.
Then move.
Second. It's quite generous, wasn't it?
Motion made by Mr. Fuller and, uh, second by Mr. Pombey, that we accept that monetary donation from Sabine River Authority. And, uh, any discussion? Not all in favor? Four.
Precinct three have the leftovers?
Hmm. Uh, is that where everyone got paid from overtime here a while back? Everybody got two checks?
No, that, that was COVID.
Okay, okay.
This is gonna be Hurricane Laurel, uh, Laura.
Three, about three of the days that, right before the hurricane, some of that's gonna get paid out on base for mental workers that were out working, and that's what we've been working on. We have a motion, y'all, to say that's what we want, but we don't have any numbers yet, we don't have the money yet. So we're working on it, so when we give the money, we'll get to take care of it. And they get the, we're gonna get the auditor, the manager, the judge, the director of the list, just to make sure we've covered everything we need. But we are in the, the package, you know, that.
A little bit more to add to that is, uh, I had some help from James White and Senator Nichols on that. They had some input, and I think that's the reason we got as much money as we did. Now, the other counties surrounding us did get some, but, uh, I was told that we got the most. So, uh, we're, they're waiting on, on getting Senator Nichols down here and White to actually, you know, give a little something in the paper publicly, so, uh, that, uh, that's, that's the reason to hold up. The money's there, it just hasn't been issued yet, to wait for them. Okay, number five, a discussion for appropriate approve resolution authorizing the submittal of the CDVG grant, uh, Mr. Mark, you wanna come and tell us all about that?
I thought you were gonna read all that, though.
No, I wasn't gonna read.
I thought about that after I said it in. Uh, as y'all all know, uh, the bid application cycle, the applications submitted in line is coming up. Uh, we talked with each commissioner, trying to seek out some good qualified projects. There are four different projects that, uh, in conjunction with the Blaster, have been working on. All four projects did go out for a public comment period. Fourteen day comment period was up yesterday. There were no comments received on it, so at this point in time, we're presenting it, Commissioner's court, if y'all wanna go forward with submitting these applications. This first application here is referenced as temporary shelter project A. Just to kind of refresh everybody, this is at the old prison area, and this would be going in and refurbishing a portion of that, making it where it would be usable as a temporary shelter for the citizens of Lewis County in the event that they did have to evacuate their home due to the hurricane or flooding. Uh, they would be able to be housed there for, for a short-term basis until they could, they could get back in, on setting. Uh, this would have, uh, portion would have full bathroom facilities, shower facilities, kitchen facilities. Uh, that has a place for them to be in the dry, they have to do it in specifics if anybody wants to get down in the weeds on the projects. But as far as this particular project, the, uh, the grant amount could be submitted for six million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Uh, one of the scoring components of this is the committal of a match commitment on the local park. Local match commitment for that would be seventy thousand, three hundred dollars.
I would, I would like to set aside the place in there that this happens for the nursing home, not, not for the owners, but the people that's in there, so they won't end up in shift to no telling where if they had to evacuate. I don't, I don't know if that can be included in the application. But those, let's say those people, when they, the last time that they were shipped out, some of them didn't make it. Those old people, it's just too hard on them. Be bad enough, but if they could, if we could set aside a place for those people out there, that, that would be good.
Oh, Owen, you could probably talk a little bit about that. The nursing homes and things come under a different guideline.
Right. Because a lot of their, uh, health human services, and that's the guideline for that. And they had to have an evacuation plan, uh, upfront, and then one of those mandatory evacuations, they had to follow that evacuation plan. And that's up to having human services, that's, uh, anything that's accounted by people doing anything with it, uh, you know.
But if there was a stipulation in this agreement, that couldn't they rewrite their plan?
Well, it, it has to be approved by the human services, that's what I'm saying, this, this, the county doesn't have anything to do with it, that's the human services, they got to follow those guidelines.
Well, you would thank the human services to approve that. I know there was some trouble last time with the evacuation. And like I said, I'm, I'm doing it for the faces out there, not for the owners.
Well, they, they have to leave. When, when, when we do a mandatory evacuation, their plan makes them leave.
But if they rewrite that plan, if we had a place to house them out there.
I don't think you want, I don't think you want that.
Uh, I, I mean, I have.
I, I don't think it would pass down to human services guys, but they could stay whenever they're mandatory.
They already had to have an agreement with other nursing homes outside of this, to ship them off to. Uh, and, uh, I think the last time they shipped them off, about four or five different places. Uh, uh, but they, they, they operated under strict guidelines and, uh, so I, I, I think Pat would have to inject part of his, what he knows about, uh, nursing homes. I mean, how, how could we ever provide their necessities?
Well, uh, kind of contingent of that, when I set up about how many people we can shelter in there, I set it up based on the larger of the persons per square foot that you can go with. So, from the standpoint of being able to accommodate somebody from a nursing home, I don't really think necessarily it would have a problem accommodating, I think the main thing would be you have, have personnel to provide the sort of, the sort of, you know, if it's gonna have to stand on, part of the budget is a brand new generator for the whole facility. Uh, because the one that, excuse me, the one that got us, you know, it's kind of unused, so to speak, but we went and built a new one. And as far as we've got, uh, if y'all are better familiar with that side, I know Tiki is, you've got that one brick building, that is further style on the side. And those could be used in such a way that you kind of, you make it a little occupancy there, it's not as dense. Because those are standalone, uh, it could, I mean, it could be used for that, uh, sort of, I don't plan. It seems to me if you wanted to set it up to bring in more commercial homes, main clients, you have to get help from human services. You definitely make a request with them, to get them to afford it. As an alternative to whatever else agreements they have. That way they don't have to operate shop. Because those buildings will be the most easier to manage, I mean, those buildings are pretty competitive.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that would be the, would it be the county's liability, let, let's say it had to be oxygen supplied out there. I mean, uh, where's that gonna come from? Let's say there's gonna be some type facility for maybe dialysis. Uh, uh, you know, um.
Right. And I, and I think you're real well versed on it, but I do know that there are health issues that have to be addressed that would be over above what, what the United States at this point.
I mean, because, uh,
and once again, to be in a nursing home, there has to be health issues that require them to be there, so you do have to have the, the special care, special personnel, oxygen, and so forth, and everything, and specifics. But I know it's a, it's another step up, starting to provide.
Yeah, I, I just.
The building from a visiting standpoint, it's not really a threat for a long-term health situation for frequent people or anything like that. It's not necessarily, we've got, we have some budget fund in there to address medical needs from a facility standpoint, but it's, it's mainly for, uh, things such as injuries and things like that. It's not.
First aid type.
First aid.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, but, I mean, I'm not gonna say that it couldn't. Uh, it's just what it would do is it would, it could possibly change, uh, what, how it's equipped and how it's built in certain areas. So.
Well, I'm just trying to help those old people. I've heard some horror stories back from reading it.
I don't wanna say that it could, I'm just saying, well, the judge, the judge says it's kind of a legal issue, and he's right. I mean, that, that's a, there could be a touchy deal, given who you define better, I mean.
Is now exiting.
Possible, your responsibility for them on their end.
State mandate that.
Sorry?
I said the state, the state mandate that, don't it, for hospitals and nursing homes?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it might really say, it's a hell.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's way above our level.
But I just thought.
That's how some of the things they are doing, it's for us, if you, uh, have seen the inside of the points, it, uh, there's gonna be quite a bit of damage, and, uh, especially in that, in that large part of the facility that's out there now. So, I mean, we're gonna have some, we're gonna, you're gonna have some life to do as far as hours, any time. Because, because once we tear walls out, you're gonna have a lot of, with the planning, that you, that you need, uh, let's just say, some level of being able to use it, uh, at pretty much any time is needed. It's gonna have obvious local visioning, uh, they'll enter it. And it's tied back to, I mean, they probably be, they offer local partitions, and they'll definitely be authorized, uh, not mandating. Uh, but you're gonna have some life to, you know, apart.
What's gonna be the capacity?
Sorry?
The capacity of, 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 how many is it gonna hold?
It's, uh, uh, a blade off, when I did the original design, we had two hundred and fifty people.
And what do we do when you get two hundred and fifty people? Send somebody else on? There's gonna be first come, first served?
Not, not counting county, city, and city, two hundred and fifty. That's a good shot, you know?
Yeah, w- once you get two hundred and fifty people, we'll have to, uh, move on up the way, but, uh, uh, I think, I think you should expel on a little bit about the money part. The reason we're not maxing up to ten million, uh, because of our numbers. So, uh, I'd like for them to know without them asking me.
Sure, Judge.
Okay.
Uh, once again, as, as we discussed with everyone early on in this, this is a competitive application. There's gonna be a lot of competition out there, therefore, the, the scoring criteria is important. Every point you can garner on this is gonna be critical. Uh, one of the things they look at is cost of beneficiary. This will be looked at as a county-wide benefit. But considering the population of the county, to go above the dollar amount for the facility, you're gonna lose three points if you score, if you exceed the dollar amount that's in here. That's why we have a cap to this as opposed to the maximum dollars that are available. Once again, every point is a Florida, and it was kind of a trade-off, uh, and these three points are gonna be critical.
Yeah, it was either, either give up a little bit to try to get what we could, or not even be competitive.
Right.
That's what it, all the mouth, right?
Uh, and I don't wanna mislead anybody, it's, these are gonna be tough applications. There's a lot of competition out there, and it's, once again, it's, it's gonna be tough.
Okay, well, y'all don't sit down, 'cause we're figuring.
We gotta, we gotta do anything, make a motion, all we gotta do there.
You gotta make a motion.
Make a, I'll make that motion.
I'll take a motion.
Motion made by, made by Mr. Pombey and second by Mr. White, uh, that we approve the resolution authorizing the submittal of the CDVG on Temporary Shelter Project No. Eight. So any more discussion? Not all in favor? Four. Uh, number six is a discussion for appropriate, uh, approving the resolution authorizing the submittal of the, uh, CDVG, uh, MIT program application for Shelter B.
Uh, Judge, this would be a very similar project. The difference would be this would be the acquisition of some property out near the airport and the construction of a new facility out there. Once again, the same intended purpose. Same amount of money? As far as the dollar amount on this one, the application amount would be six million, nine hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars with a match amount of seventy thousand five hundred.
And it's, uh, that, that building is essentially about the same, uh, it's just a new building, and we don't have to do any dim, dimble, uh, with exception of a little bit more earthwork, am I right, Pat?
It is correct.
Yeah. And, and actually, uh, putting on a water booster or, or some type like that?
It's like, uh, that side out there, even though it's high ground, uh, given its distance from the, the, from the gravity suit, you'll have, you'll have a limitation, just because it, it really makes it too costly to drive a gravity, fast moving suit. So we'll have to pump that, basically go straight into the system that the prison has, that, that's got ample capacity, uh, because it's potentially based on twelve hundred beds. And also because of the elevation out there, probably by the top pressure you're gonna get, it's gonna be about thirty feet, feet or so. But that's not gonna meet enough, uh, pressure from a sprinkler standpoint, you're gonna have to have sprinklers out. So we're gonna have a water coaster out there that's of course be fed by city, but and the city, if you know, we, we, we forward it always.
Does that have anything with, uh, working on the roads or anything?
We had, we had, there again, uh, we had the road in there, and because of the beneficiary, it, it threw us above five hundred dollars per person. it, it threw us above $500 per person.
Okay.
And it threw our numbers way low, so we took the road out, am I, am I correct?
Yes.
To.
Yeah, we, typically, you know, the first time we talked about it, we talked about upgrading the road, upgrading the road, and I think the regional budget had shelter, road, had water, so, I actually had some additional funds in there for electrical service, got to step that up to get up there. And we ended up having to tear that road, the road was a pretty big fall, because it was right at the top, so it was a mile, so we had to take the road out, and we had to remove some of what I would consider more future, more top huge part of the full life of the city, in order to get the building settled.
So, when you talk about the, the 65 points, just for, just a second, you know, that, that is a breaking point of where they even look at these applications a lot, am I correct?
Yes, sir, Judge, and, and we, we discussed the 65 points early on, but the applications that are submitted, basically what they're going to do, if, if, in order, the application has to score at least 65 points, that goes in the first round review. Any application that scores less than 65 points is set to the side. Every application that scores 65 points, they're going to take, and, and in this case, Newton County as an example is submitting two applications under Harvard. One of those applications, if it scores over 65, will be, will be looked at in the first cycle. They go through and they fund every applicant that scores over 65 points. If they still have funds left, then they go back and look at the second application that scored over 65. If they fund those and still have some funds left, then they look at any application that scored less than 65, and go as far as they gather the funds there. Uh, we think it'll be very surprising if, if they finish the first round.
But we're, in your opinion, I know you're, you're just a sampler for scoring, but in your opinion, you're thinking these two projects will score above 65?
They're going to be right on the bubble, Judge. I wouldn't be willing to bet either way. And once again, as we discussed early on, and I know a lot of times going on, a lot of things have happened, these are not low-mot projects, these are county-wide benefit projects. That costs you 20 points right, right off the bat, or, or 20% of your application is the back of the, not low-mot projects. Uh, the first three criteria that score, once again, if y'all recall, the county has no control over that criteria, the state has established that, that criteria based on what they put in, in place with the action plan when they put it out, that's cost you another 10 points, or another 10% of your application right there. So, that costs 30, 30% of the application right off the bat, and so it's, it's going to be hard. I'm, I'm not going to try to mislead anybody, it's going to be tough. Best we can do is, is do the very best we can, and once again, that's why these points are so critical. We need to do everything we can to keep it above 65, and that goes back to the dollars that are put into these projects, and while we, we do not recommend exceeding that dollar amount, those are the three points.
Yeah, and to capture our whole countywide, then, uh, you, you have to take this dollar amount and divide that into each person, and that, that gives, and, and I think that threshold is $500?
Yes, sir.
And it's.
The first threshold to get maximum points is less than $100 per beneficiary. Uh, we would not build this project for that. The next threshold is a $500 amount, and once again, that's looking at the entire population of Newton County, so that's, that's the projection that we went with.
And, and by dropping the LMI, which is 20 points, then we jump down to 15 points, and we're trying to capture as many of them 15 points as we can.
Exactly.
And, and that's the reason we kept playing with our money, had to start deleting stuff, try to, uh, capture those 15 points, because that's about, that's about the only thing you got to play with on this whole scoring criteria.
Once again, with it, with it not being an Alamo project, you're hurtful in how it starts to go. They had, and, once again, some of the other criteria, they didn't ask about, for whatever reason, I don't know, but, one of the things that's really hurt Newton County on a potential 10 points, what they look at is they go back and look at the countywide range value of the property, divide that by the number of people in the county. Uh, as y'all all know, a lot of the property here in Newton County is owned by the property industry, and that really hurt Newton County as, as far as the dollar amount percentage of a potential 10 points, Newton County scores two points. And that's the exact rate as far as, is the value of all this timber property. That is not directly on my, on my citizens here.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, I hear a motion.
So, move.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and second by Mr. Pombi, that we approve the resolution authorizing the supplemental of CDBG, uh, mid-program application for shelter, temporary shelter project B. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Four. Number seven is authorize, the resolution authorizing the supplemental of CDBG, uh, mid-program application for flood drainage project, and, uh, turn it over to you, Mr. Mark.
Thanks, Judge. Uh, once again, going back a couple of months to when we initially started talking about this application cycle, uh, this particular application will go into competition for the 2016 pot of $1,000. Not as much money out there. There again, uh, we wanted to give Newton County the greatest chance possible of getting the project funded, and so we are submitting one of the projects under 2016. One of the things about this particular project, this will be a low-mot project. This project, uh, and Pat, correct me if I'm mistaken, but this is for the replacement of.
Bridges.
Eight bridges, one culvert?
Two, two, two large time, so, I agree. And, but, the bridge and culverts, y'all make, y'all remember this or not, but we have one of the requirements is that your project part of it, excuse me, uh, has the contiguous, it has to all together. So, part of it is a structure home that are tied to the main bridge, and some of it's a structure tied to the big tower. So, generally speaking, it impacts precincts, one and three. So, and actually, I think Martin was all about the projection on the story, because I think this one is actually projected to fall from the floor.
Yeah, and there again, a, a big difference is the fact that this is a low-mot project, so you're going to get those 20 points, or, or a low-mot benefit.
What's the benefit, do you know?
I do not recall that. I want to say it scored in the I-70s, but I told you two of them.
How much was that?
Uh, Judge, that particular grant, uh, $3,657,657.85 with a match commitment of $37,000. And there again, that goes back to the cost of beneficiary as well. We had to determine the number of beneficiaries within the benefit area of these drainage basins, and we backed into the numbers to, to get the maximum project we could for the fund base.
I hear a motion.
I can look at it. I'll see.
Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. White, that we approve the resolution for CDBG, uh, mid-program application for the flood drainage improvements. Any more discussion? Not all in favor? Four. Number eight is, uh, resolution authorizing the supplemental of CDBG, uh, mid-program application for water, uh, and I'll let you talk about that.
This is another one of the projects that we talked about early on, uh, as far as during the times of the disaster, uh, issues here within the city of Newton, as well as outlying areas and the, and the water supplies in those areas. What this project would do, this would interconnect, uh, by the Weir water supply, Burkeville water supply.
Burkeville.
Jamestown water supply with the city of Newton. In the event of a disaster, if any one of these systems went down, they would be able to receive potable water from the other systems that it could flow from. So, it could flow into the city of Newton from the surrounding area, or it could flow from the city of Newton outward to the, to the other water supply. Once again, initially, Newton County had talked about this project, y'all goes back to scoring, funding, and how many applications you can submit. This was submitted as a Harvey application, this would be the third application. If it was submitted as a 16, this would be the 16 application that would go to the back, either this one or the other one we just discussed, would have to go back to the second round and hope the money was there. In addition, the Newton County being able to submit applications, it's 15, 16, you can submit a joint application, which is a standalone application that's looked at as part of our application. The city of Newton expressed an interest in joining with Newton County on this application, and so this will be submitted with a joint application. It will be submitted with the city of Newton being the lead applicant on this application. Uh, there again, one of the main reasons is, we're going to get more points on this application if the city of Newton is the lead applicant as opposed to Newton County being the lead applicant. This particular grant, uh, score would be $8,320,400. The match commitment is proposed to be split between the city of Newton and Newton County, so Newton County would be, uh, committing to one half of a percent match on it, which would be $41,800.
And, uh, through all our discussion, Donnie's also been in, in on all our discussion, he knows exactly what's going on, and he, he actually said that he would take the lead, the city would take the lead on this, and maybe, uh, be able to capture this project. And Pat, while you're standing, uh, I, I know they're probably wondering, well, how you going, when you turn the valve on for Burkeville to Newton, are they going to drain that water system up there?
Right.
So, we're, we're talking about additional one water well, right?
Yes, sir. Um, just generally speaking, the way I think it should be laid out is, uh, is, is we would have another well, it kind of, it kind of kills two birds at once, because Newton, first of all, their wells are really old, and they've, they've had trouble with them in the past, and they've had to deep them into a three ton heap. So, this would put a new well, uh, here to do this, like a basin, water source, and we would, in order to go to Bondwear, even if Bondwear's well flooded Newton, a lot of this you could call a gravity, that way, but if you have to be any large amount of volume, you just, you have to put in a booster down here, for those of you who know what a booster is. It's kind of across 190 from the high school back on, used to be, in the state of Davidson Road, before they also agreed to that. And, anyway, Bondwear would be fed to the south through Newton system, Jamestown would go, uh, I came up with, I thought it would be most economical route, it would go up 87, out of that East Newton plant that the city of Newton actually spent a lot of water on for to upgrade. Then from that location, you could feed Burkeville, uh, or Jamestown, or both.
Well, it would, how would you have to go, what, to Shankenville, to the cutoff?
Could that go down 14, 15?
Yeah, and then it would just have to go to 2626 to feed Bondwear?
Uh, actually, we'd go down, uh, 190.
I know, but you just, but 2626, don't they have water on 2626?
Uh, East Newton, yes, they do.
Bondwear.
But, but see, they're good.
Bondwear.
Not from Bondwear, they're fed by, uh, well, part of it on the north end is fed by, uh, city of Newton and East Newton.
No, no. If you leave Newton and go down 190 to Bondwear, Bondwear water supply comes to 2626, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you would tie it in right there?
Well, actually, well, you can tie it in there, but actually, we're tying it in down to our water plant, that's on.
So, you would go all the way down?
Yeah, you'll go all the way down.
Okay.
And then you, but the idea is to get the water to, for everybody's plants and storage.
Okay.
Are all interconnected.
Okay.
What, uh, what Pat has discussed, well, you know, their line coming from the plant all the way to 2626, and as they come this way, they may start out with two inches, but by the time, I guess, 2626, it may be, uh, three quarters, so, so you can tie six inches in to that, so.
So, you're still feeding that plant, let that plant just feed it by?
Yeah, the idea is, the idea is that if you get the water to their plant, that they'll still be able to feed their customers.
And they'll be able to do any additional treatment that may be needed, or, or nation or whatever.
I'm waiting. All right, I hear a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the supplemental of the joint community development block grant mitigation program, application for emergency water interconnective project. Gentlemen.
Second, motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Pombi, we approve that resolution on, on the water system and interconnection project. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor? All. Four. Okay, number six is to discuss an appropriate, uh, approved resolution authorizing the execution of the interlocal agreement, uh, minar- memorandum of understanding with the city of Newton, and this is in conjunction with this, that we had to, uh, produce this resolution between us and them to, uh, move forward with this project. So, that's what I'm asking to do, is to approve that, uh, that resolution of, uh, interlocal agreement. Do you get any?
Once again, this is a GLO requirement, and this is just so, uh, if, if the application's funded, they don't want to come back and then, then find out there's a disagreement, misunderstanding, or whatever, on how to proceed with the project, they want to make sure everybody's in agreement on the joint application going into this, and they know what their responsibilities are, how to move forward. So, the interlocal agreement, once again, stipulates Newton County and the city of Newton will be going 50/50 on match commitment. It also stipulates that the city of Newton would take the lead on any maintenance and upkeep of this project, once it's funded and goes into place.
Number nine? Yeah. Yeah, I want to correct that, uh, statement from six to nine on that, uh, uh, resolution. Uh, I hear a motion to that effect?
I make a motion. Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Pombi and second by Mr. Fuller, that we approve the, uh, interlocal agreement with the city of Newton on this joint project for the CDBG, uh, mitigation project for the water in, interconnection project. So, uh, any more discussion? Not all in favor? Four.
Thank y'all very much. Uh, real quickly, I'd just like to remind y'all, the science funding source, once again, there will be funds coming through the COGS, through a method of distribution that has yet to be set. I encourage Newton County to be actively involved in the method of distribution. In addition, this is round one of this funding. Round two will be coming next spring. We don't know the exact criteria, we feel sure it'll still be low-mot criteria, but we encourage, good, you, and the rest of you, all be thankful that some projects will be submitted next spring. If a project is not funded, we don't think we should resubmit that project, or if you have to submit a, a brand-new project, but as we, as we know this information, we will be providing.
Does, does the scoring get better when you do a joint venture like that, with the county and the city? Do, do you get a better score?
In this particular, yes, this project is being submitted. Uh, there again, the reason for that, some of the things they look at, the city as being the first-time applicant with the GLA, as opposed to the county being the lead. Unfortunately, the first three scoring criteria they look at, once again, the special 10 points, if the county gets two points on, that still, that still comes into play. Uh, so, but yeah, it is a little bit better scoring with the city being the lead on the application. on that.
I hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion been made by Mr. Fuller and seconded by Mr. White to adjourn. It is, uh, seven minutes to four. All in favor? Four of them. Okay. Y'all, where we at?